Okay, good morning, and I'd like to welcome you to our special meeting of the Board covering the superintendents. Today is June 5th, 2023. It's a little past 9:30, and I'd like to introduce Dr. Stephen Joel and Dr. Ralph Ferry.
Better? Okay. What a great pleasure to be with you today on behalf of Dr. Ferry and myself and McPherson Jacobson to get to this point in where we feel pretty, pretty good about the candidate pool that we had overall, given the fact that in America right now, there are hundreds, if there have been hundreds of openings the last couple of years, and there's hundreds more coming. The average tenure, I was doing a presentation a few, a few weeks ago at a national conference, and then there was, there was some studies that have been done that, that quite frankly, the, they're just, there's a real concern about the candidate pool across the country. And of course, I think your local folks have probably articulated that to you as well. Nonetheless, there's still, there's interest in Sarasota for the reasons that we heard a lot about when we were doing the stakeholder report. And so you've got something good, and we think you've got your next superintendent in this group, but we're going to work you through a process where you're going to have to make some determinations. So having said that, the agenda today is we're going to do an introduction, an alphabetical order of the shortlist. I'm going to hand the packets out very, very quickly. And then we'll, introductory comments only, and then they've all, each one of them have done a video. You'll get a chance to kind of see who they are, and we gave them two questions that were pretty thought provoking. And then we will answer any questions that you might have about those candidates. And then we will work you through a process where we'll ask you to rank them after we're completely done with the, with the six on the shortlist. Your interviews are on June 12th. We'll talk a little bit about that. Thank you to those that submitted questions. I'm going to work on those this afternoon and tomorrow and get those back to Kathy so that on the 12th, you'll be ready to do those interviews. And then you've got a decision coming up later on in June, and then we talked a little bit beforehand about when it's a good starting time, assuming that you can select a superintendent. So it's gonna, it's gonna march pretty quickly in, in, in order, and ultimately, you're gonna have a superintendent because we heard loudly and clearly from your stakeholder groups, and Dr. Ferry is going to be talking a little bit about, about the stakeholder input in a minute. You've, we heard loudly and clearly that people want continuity, they want consistency, and they want the focus on instruction in classrooms. And we heard everywhere we were how important the A rating is that Sarasota County currently has. So you've got a good school system, you've got a lot of people who are vested and, and supportive, but they also have high expectations, as you do as well. So with that, before I talk about the candidate pools as a whole, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ferry, talk about the stakeholder input, so you just get a sense for that. Dr. Ferry?
Before, before you go, I just want to make sure, so from the agenda today, we're having intro to shortlist, the video of the shortlist. I know where you're going to go over the, the shareholder input, and then, but I want to make sure Board members, we are down to six, at least, excuse me, that's been shortlisted by McPherson, but that if we potentially could be narrowing down, look more narrow, if you want, if that's up to the Board as we go forward, and then final adoption of the shortlist will be tomorrow. So I just want to make sure that everyone had the game plan in mind. Okay?
We'll talk more about it because we want to, that's going to be your opportunity to provide candid feedback. But three, if you interview three people on the 12th, you could do it in a day, and that will include individual interviews with each board member. More than three is going to take quite a bit more time. So we've had a lot of success with three person, and we think that there are three good solid candidates in here.
Mr. Edwards?
Yeah, regardless of how many candidates make the, the shortlist, I'm only interested in, I mean, aside from the process of which I've been involved with, I'm really interested in one-on-one interviews. I appreciate that there's going to be Board interviews, but one-on-ones, I think are essential.
And we have those, that's going to be part of the process.
Yeah, we do have those scheduled, yes. All right. Sorry, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, so thank you again, and we're glad to be here. We did spend four full days with your stakeholder groups, and we also certainly included the online survey. We'd like to thank the support from your communications department in terms of helping us with the software, and that was very, very beneficial in terms of providing us with input from the stakeholders and helped us summarize that report. You probably, I hope, all saw that summary. We did bring hard copies of the stakeholder report. Kathy has them. There's, we brought two, but that's one of the more massive stakeholder reports I've seen in terms of, and that's a credit to your community in terms of their participation. Again, the district's A rating was mentioned many times, as was the high quality staff and their commitment to work. Certainly Sarasota is a beautiful location with so much to do and so many offerings for individuals throughout the community. The question that we really wanted to get to was the issues and challenges the next superintendent will face, and in the summary, we listed several, which is confusion and apprehension regarding the current direction of the district in light of the removal of the former superintendent. That was a concern that we heard consistently. General sense of disconnect between the stakeholders, parents, students, staff, the Board, and the state. And again, that was a common theme that we heard the four days that we're here, and I'm sure you'll read it in, in the online survey. There seems to be some lack of trust. Students were concerned that their teachers are becoming frustrated. We did have a concern about the impact on students. Lack of effective communication and transparency, particularly when significant decisions are made by school administration, and concern with the number of superintendents in recent years. The folks we spoke to, and rightly so, they want to see consistency and a long-term commitment to the county. So with that, that's an overall executive summary of the stakeholder report. There are so many positives as well, having the opportunity to see the facilities and meet with community members. There's a genuine interest in terms of, and it's a collective interest, in terms of student achievement and doing the right thing for students in the, in the county. And also, very impressed with the resources that the county has to offer in terms of the educational process.
You know you have a lot of interested people, and they showed up, and with more than 1,000 surveys being completed, the 200 and something page document is available if you want to prove it. Okay, questions on that at all?
I don't see any up here.
Okay. All right. So I want to just give you a general overview of the process. So we, we made a lot of phone calls. We acquired quite a few names of people that we should reach out to. No secret, superintendents have lots of choices, and if they're in a good situation, they're not moving into a situation that isn't unknown. So there, the applicant pool across the country is low, but we feel like we were able to attract the best quality candidates. These are folks that we're going to give you that want to be here. Now, one caveat, in our process, we require, of course, an application and then three listed references that they, or excuse me, three written references that they have to submit. We have one applicant in here, I'm not going to disclose the name, that's on our short, on our shortlist, that had the majority of their information in by the deadline date, which I think was May 18th. And then they, they, just because they were sort of a late entry into the process, somebody whose name we were given, they, I think it was 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning on the 19th is when they finished up with their last reference. So if this person makes the shortlist, then tomorrow you can, you can acknowledge that as part of identifying the three that you want to bring in for formal interviews. So they're all in, they're, we're going to talk about them, we're going to tell you why we put them on the list. We view our role really as being able to cut through all of the applications, match them up against criteria, and we're looking for people who most closely represent the criteria that you established and were vetted by your community groups. So we're pretty excited to bring these six to you. So let's, unless there's any other questions, Ms. Ziegler, I think we'll hand out the packets and get going.
If I may, just regarding that late application, what you'll want to do tomorrow as part of a formal vote at a, at a board meeting will be just move to extend the deadline to accept that application if you choose to do it, and if that person does make the shortlist.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we'll, we'll start with the first one, and we're going in alphabetical order so that there isn't any, any misunderstanding in terms of how we're presenting them. Yep. So the first one is Terry Connor, and Dr. Ferry is going to speak to him.
So Mr. Terry Connor currently serves as Deputy Superintendent, Chief Academic Officer for Hillsborough County. He has responsibility of leading 239 district-managed schools, 16 principals are under his supervision, the offices of teaching and learning, assessment, accountability, career and tech ed, federal programs, grants, early child education, fine and performing arts, school improvement, leadership development, and professional development. He was named a future chief by Chiefs for Change, a bipartisan network of state and district educational leaders. He holds a Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of North Florida with an emphasis in middle grades education and a Master of Science degree from Nova Southeastern in Administration and Management. We contacted, and I know Dr. Wallace is available to answer questions later, his references, he worked, works very, I'm going to summarize some of those, works very well with the union to modify the Danielson rubric, which serves all staff, recognize the institutional knowledge of people that have, since he's been in Hillsborough. He works very well with helping solve grievances, very cost-conscious, maximizes resources, significant cuts to the budget and staffing he had to make, made very difficult decisions when it came, when he first came to Hillsborough, but was able to help articulate those decisions to the Board and community. He's, he's data-driven, great asset to all the foundations and community groups, very ready to take on the job of superintendent, navigates difficult situations, embraces change management, and is solutions-driven, sensitive to high-risk students, politically savvy, a leader of leaders. One individual said, stated, "A gentleman with high standards, dynamic, and a great systems thinker." So with that, we'll play the two interview questions. So if we can turn on question one, please.
My passion for education drives me, and my interests...
Please pause.
Oh yeah, we should give them, we're going to tell you what the questions were.
Yeah, please.
First question is why are you interested in the position? Second question is based on your research of Sarasota County, what do you view to be the major challenges, and what suggestions, thoughts, ideas, initiatives do you have to address this challenge?
Thank you.
My passion for education drives me, and my interests to apply for this position. I have spent the last 20 years dedicated to ensuring that every student has access to a high-quality education that equips them with the skills and the knowledge that they need to thrive in our world. As your next superintendent, I see an incredible opportunity to significantly expand that impact to the lives of the Sarasota students and the broader community of Sarasota. In this unique time in education and having served as a number two in two school districts here in Florida, I feel it's time I'm called to this role for superintendent. Having improved the state rankings in Clay County, we moved from 20th to 8th, and in Hillsborough County, from 36th to 19th. I'm confident that we can work together to make Sarasota number one in the state of Florida. Systems thinking is a strength that I bring to this position. As superintendent, I understand the importance of considering the big picture while also attending to the details. Therefore, I will collaboratively develop and implement strategic plans that align to our district's vision and goals. By analyzing the data and monitoring progress and making informed decisions, I will ensure that our district operates efficiently and effectively by knowing how to activate the appropriate resources and talent to achieve our success. Instructional leadership is also one of my core strengths. I'm very experienced and committed to fostering a culture of continuous improvement where excellence in teaching and learning is at the forefront. I'll work closely with our educators and our leaders to ensure that we've established a shared vision of excellent instruction, and that our instructional practices are evidence-based, innovative, and aligned with the needs of our students. In addition, I will promote effective professional learning opportunities and evidence-based resources that support our teachers' growth. Through focused collaboration and progress monitoring, we can achieve that excellent instructional environment. But all of that success comes through strong, honest relationships, and through strong communication, I believe that I can build upon those relationships that are already existing. Through my approachable and collaborative nature, I'll be able to accelerate building trust, which is so necessary if we're going to work as a team. I value the input and perspective of all stakeholders, from students to parents, teachers, staff, and community members. I'll be committed to building a strong partnership that supports our district's mission by fostering open lines of communication, promoting a culture of trust and respect, and actively engaging with our community on a regular basis. Based on my research, I'll share two critical challenges that demand our immediate attention. First, we have to strengthen early literacy if we're going to improve third-grade proficiency. And second, we must enhance the accountability measures across the district to improve the overall student achievement, to ensure that Sarasota County becomes a top-performing district in the state. Regarding early literacy, I would lean on my previous experience to strengthen the quality of learning during these crucial years of development. I'll start with how we're engaging our families within the community. Those who have children from birth to four years old, starting at birth, we will have to engage our families right out of the delivery room with care packages containing literacy resources to support them early on. In Sarasota, more than 71% of students who participated in pre-K are proficient by third grade compared to 58% who did not participate. Therefore, we have to look to see how we can expand those pre-K offerings across the district so that we can engage those students early on in their development. Leveraging pre-K ESC blended models may be an approach we can use to open up more seats. I'll also review the current data and identify the trends and patterns and our strengths and our areas of opportunity, and really devise some targeted plans based on that data. And lastly, I want to ensure that our pre-K3 curriculum and instructional practices are aligned to the science of reading. I would complete a curriculum and PD audit and review our K-12 reading plan to really get an understanding of how we're doing things and make any adjustments that may need to occur to align to the research. The second challenge that I think is evidence is the overall effectiveness of the current shared accountability system within Sarasota. As your superintendent, you have my commitment to fostering an optimal learning environment so that all students can succeed academically. And drawing on my track record of educational outcomes, I deeply understand what it takes to establish a culture of instructional excellence. You know, research has shown that school leadership substantially impacts achievement, second only to a high-quality teacher. So therefore, leveraging this fact, we're going to quickly scale our efforts by working collaboratively with our school leaders to enhance the collective capacity and do that within a framework of shared accountability. We'll develop a shared vision for excellent instruction, and this vision will delineate clear expectations for classroom culture, the rigorous content that students are exposed to, the academic ownership and the demonstration of learning that we expect from our students. And by doing so, we can ensure that students receive the highest quality education that they deserve. We'll devise structures around collaborative planning that will empower teachers to share best practices, to analyze data, and we'll also regularly visit classrooms to understand how students are responding to the instructional decisions we're making. We'll use trend data and evidence obtained through those visits to develop real-time targeted professional learning opportunities, and we'll discuss improvement progress with our school leaders on a routine basis. These actions will undoubtedly move our district to the first and the top in the state of Florida.
I don't see any. We can continue to proceed.
I did mention that Dr. Wallace is on Zoom, so she worked a great deal on helping us with these candidates, checking references, et cetera. And certainly, she's here, should you have any questions, after we finish presenting the candidates to you. The second candidate that we're presenting is Dr. Allison Foster. As you're aware, Dr. Allison Foster serves as your interim superintendent of schools, appointed by the Board on February 8th, 2023. She's been an educator in Sarasota for 24 years, 16 years experience as a school-based administrator, 13 as a principal, eight years experience as a classroom teacher. From April 2021, she serves as the Executive Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations. She's a native of Sarasota, having attended the schools here and raises her family in Sarasota. Dr. Foster has a doctorate in Educational Administration from the University of Florida, Masters in Elementary Education, and a Bachelor's in Business and Speech Communication, has also a minor, and a Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Ed with a math endorsement from the University of Florida. She holds a Master's of Arts from the University of South Florida and a Bachelor's Degree in Business from Wake Forest University, and a Bachelor's in Elementary Education from Indiana University. After Dr. Wallace contacted her references, these are the following that she learned from her references. She was the best principal, one individual said she was the best principal in Sarasota has ever had working with the kids and families. She's always on top of things, inventive, listens to families, meets their needs. She knows Sarasota, compassionate and graceful, forward thinker. We know her and should hire her, one individual stated. Has data-driven in her decisions, understands everything about Sarasota, plays by the rules. She exceeds our expectations, works well with parents. When she was principal, she taught many families how important education is for their child's success. She honors traditions and our community. She will be here for the long run, not seeing the position as a stepping stone, not political, and very realistic about what is doable and what is not, and is a fantastic communicator. So these are what Dr. Foster's references stated regarding her candidacy. So with that, we'll turn to the video, please.
As an educator in Sarasota County Schools for the past 26 years, I believe my strengths with student achievement, community relationships, and organizational leadership demonstrate my credentials to successfully lead Sarasota County Schools. I have a proven track record of successfully providing instructional leadership resulting in high student achievement. As a school-based leader in our district for 16 years, I offered high-impact instructional strategies, earning an A grade every year from the Florida Department of Education. My educational and administrative achievements reflect my focus on providing quality, engaging instruction, and challenging all children, including striving and gifted learners, to make significant academic gains. My interactions and relationships throughout the county reflect my commitment and passion for Sarasota County Schools. As a lifelong resident of Sarasota, I have been involved in the school system in nearly every capacity. I'm a proud alum of Golf Gate, Brookside, and Riverview. I taught at Laurel Nakomis in Ashton, served as an assistant principal at Toledo Blade in Golf Gate, led Philippi Shores for 13 years as principal, served as the Executive Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations for nearly two years, and have had the honor to lead our district for the past four months as the interim superintendent. I have connections to staff members, community partners, parents, and students throughout the district. This is the community where I grew up. It's my home, and I'm committed to and invested in the success of our students. When my own children started school, I knew there was only one school district that I would trust with their education, Sarasota County School. I've had extensive executive leadership roles across a broad range of departments, including both operational and academic areas. Since February, I've had the opportunity to lead Sarasota County Schools. In my short time in this position, I've restructured school board workshops to create engaging, problem-solving discussions focused on key academic and operational areas, recommended changes to the district's organizational structure to promote an environment with enhanced focus on accountability and transparency, secured a contract with exceptional learning solutions to conduct a thorough analysis of our ESC program, continued to work with Evergreen Solutions to analyze the current salary structure and to propose a compensation plan of philosophy that is fair and equitable, analyzed current land holdings and the need for land in key locations for future schools based on growth, and collaborated with the CFO and Cabinet to realign funds, including the ESSAR grant, to ensure that dollars are aligned to key areas impacting student achievement, and proposed accountability systems to evaluate the impact of specific positions and programs. My degree in business, as well as my education background, provide the necessary understanding of budget development to ensure the responsible allocation and utilization of district funds and resources. I am passionate about Sarasota County Schools. I've given the opportunity to lead the district with my instructional and organizational skills, along with my community relationships. I am confident we can put Sarasota County Schools at the top of the state. One of the biggest challenges facing the district is student achievement success. In 2022, the percentage of students who earned a passing score was 63% in ELA, 65% in math, and 63% in science. During my 13 years as the principal of Philippi, I created a culture of high expectations, where we challenged our students, leading to high student achievement across the board. During my final full year at Philippi, 80% of our students earned a passing score on ELA and 87% on math, with 47% of all fifth graders earning a level five in math. If selected as the full-time superintendent, I'm confident that instructional changes can lead to significant increases in all areas in the first year. One specific area focuses at the elementary level. I would utilize my elementary experience to create a solid foundation leading to high student achievement in the primary grades. I have proposed reallocating ESSAR dollars to put more funds toward our early learners. This includes the addition of literacy coaches for all our elementary schools. The literacy coach provides support to ensure that literacy instruction is data-driven and student-centered. Focusing on reading instruction in the primary grades will significantly make a difference for for students in all subject areas as they move through their middle and high school years. Another challenge is making sure there is a clear organizational structure and that everyone in the district is focused on the goal of increasing student achievement. It's important to make sure that we have the structure and systems in place to support our staff so they can properly support our customers, students, and parents. Under my leadership, we would focus on providing solid customer service to help our students and families in all areas, providing clear, concise, and transparent communication, providing a safe learning environment, and offering a challenging and nurturing classroom experience. I would work with the staff to ensure that every employee is providing incredible service for every student every day. Finally, I think it's important to bring the community together. I believe all of us in our community have one shared goal, and that is the success of our students. As I have done for the past four months, I would continue to focus on working together with the common goal of increasing student achievement. I would continue to focus board workshops on important collaborative discussions that help us problem-solve and continue to move the district forward. I would also establish quarterly town halls to provide a listening tour to give parents and community members an opportunity to share topics that are of interest to them. I have a proven track record of working with staff, parents, and stakeholders for the success of our district. As a lifelong resident and career educator in Sarasota, I offer connections, relationships, and stability that are needed to continue our growth to ensure a successful environment for all students. Our incredible community makes Sarasota so special. A strong community makes a strong school district, and a strong school district makes a strong community. If we bring all stakeholders and resources together, there is no goal we cannot achieve. Together, I know we can set the path to have the highest student achievement in the state.
I see no questions. We may proceed.
Was.
Oh, we gotta start over again. Sorry, just for the, for the community. Thank you. Sorry.
It must go off if not used for a while, right? Okay. Sorry about that. I will do better. All right. Dr. Joe Phillips currently serves as the chief information officer for the Broward County Schools, where he's responsible for more than 500 people. He began this position in April 2022, preceded by one year in Volusia County and six years in Kansas City and Park Hill, Missouri. His educational leadership is primarily in operations and technology. His leadership acumen came from his military service for 16 years, where he was a commissioned officer in the Army. He has a doctorate in educational leadership from Liberty University. Dr. Phillips and his family moved to Volusia from Kansas City when a position he was well-suited for became available. The departure from Volu-, the departure of the Volusia superintendent and subsequent opening in Broward led him to Broward County. The departure of the Broward superintendent has led to his interest in the Sarasota position. So his references would have basically said this. He has a wide array of experiences and interests in school district leadership, and has worked with superintendents that have influenced his professional perspectives toward leading school districts. Kansas City, Missouri, you may not know about, but Kansas City, Missouri, for the longest time, was the, was, you know, they were just the textbook for superintendent turnover. Many, many superintendents, short period of time, state takeover, super probation. He was a big part of helping get them through that. He's a well-rounded people person that helps and supports others, thinking critically and innovatively about challenges. As a child actor growing up, he's a big supporter of the arts. He's very analytical and organized in his daily work when leading significant initiatives in both Broward and Volusia. He was described by many references as a breath of fresh air. In both Volusia and Broward, he's given great credit for making systemic improvements in both instructional technology and restructuring operations to have significant resources in very short periods of time. The recovery from the Broward flood was led by Dr. Phillips. The superintendent actually called it the best work ever. He never left his post until a last staff member was rescued after 2:00 AM. He was instrumental in supporting teaching and learning through strategic planning and partnership with the chief academic officer. He's always prepared, highly intelligent, and articulate in his presentations and his rationale for district decisions.
Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about my interest in becoming Sarasota County Schools' next superintendent. When I think about Sarasota County Schools, I think about a few things. I think about academic excellence. I think about a dedication to student success. And I think about a district and a board who understands that a partnership between educators and parents is the only way for our students to achieve. That is the educator's job to ensure that students are college and career-ready for whatever pathway they choose, and that it's the parent's job to make sure that their students are life-ready. I also think about the challenges that Sarasota County Schools is currently facing. I think about ESE, ESOL, reading scores, student discipline. But through those challenges, I see the opportunities. I see the opportunity for Sarasota County School to be not just the best district in the state, but the best in the country. That Sarasota County Schools can be the district that other districts use as the benchmark for their success. To get there is going to take work. It's going to take amazing strategic planning that can be operationalized, and that's where my leadership comes in. I have a mixture, a robust mixture, of military and educational experience. I started as an E1 in the Army and worked my way up to non-commissioned officer, and then finally commissioned as an officer. I got to work on some of the most innovative programs in the United States Army, including the community-based healthcare organization and Operation Warrior Trainer and the Warrior Transition Unit. I got to be in leadership positions to ensure that our strategic plans that we are creating are fully operationalized and actually turn the dreaming into achieving. And that's what my leadership can bring. Strategic operational planning, getting down to the tactical level, and using data to ensure that we're meeting our benchmarks and that we're achieving the success that we thought. I watched a board meeting recently where the idea of using ESAR funding to pay for Orton Gillingham was brought up. I thought that was an amazing idea, especially one that's close to my heart. My wife quit her job when my son was in fourth grade. He was dyslexic, and she was able to use Orton Gillingham to homeschool him and get him onto reading level. By the end of fourth grade, he went from a pre-kindergarten reading level to a fourth-grade reading level, and by middle school, he was above reading level. And now, at the end of his junior year, he's still above reading level. And while he'll always be dyslexic, he can read and still above reading level. When we look for innovative excellence like this, it's these types of ideas that need to be not just thought about, but operationalized and realized. One of the challenges that I saw in that board meeting was when the board chair asked what the capacity is. How can we actually achieve this blue-sky-thinking idea? And my heart was broken when I heard it was going to take more than a year to operationalize this wonderful strategic goal. Under my leadership, we'll be able to operationalize our strategic planning. We'll be able to make sure that the dream turns into achieving. Sarasota County Schools is an A-rated district. However, to a student who can't read on grade level, that A doesn't mean very much. To an ESE student who's not getting their proper accommodations, that A doesn't mean very much. And to students, teachers, and administrators who are dealing with student discipline and school safety issues, that A doesn't mean very much. To address these and other issues, I would implement my 90 days and counting post-entry plan. The first 30 days of that plan would focus on assessment and learning, looking at the data and getting a full understanding of what's going on. I would also do listen and learns with the board, community members, my direct reports, staff, and students to really understand their perspectives and what they believe are causing the challenges. The next 30 days would revolve around analysis and planning, understanding the data, what we're seeing, what folks have told us, and making sure that we have a full understanding. We would also do a SWOT analysis, looking at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to really pull out those key priorities and see how we can make an action plan out of that. We would also look at other districts to see how they are handling these same issues and if any have already been successful at overcoming the issues and turning them into opportunities. The next 30 days would focus on execution of the action plan, ensuring that the plan is broken into goals, objectives, and tasks so that we can operationalize the strategy to make sure that we're not just coming up with what we'd like to do, but we're coming up with how we would like to get it done. The and counting part of the plan focuses on quarterly stock takes, ensuring that every quarter we are looking at what have we accomplished? Did we set out to do the things that we were going to do? Did those things work? If not, why not? And what are we going to do about it? Those stock takes have to be open, they have to be transparent, and we have to get feedback from the board and all the stakeholders previously mentioned to understand that if we have to shift, then we do. My philosophy is just always turns into adjust. Whenever we're making a plan, it's very easy to say, we just have to do this, we just have to do that. But once we start implementing and executing the plan, we find very quickly that we have to adjust the plan. And we have to ensure that we are flexible enough to adjust the plan along the way to make sure that we are reaching the benchmarks of success that we have set for ourselves. The other issues and challenges that I have seen is trust with the community and the relationship between the board and the superintendent. To address these, I would make sure that as a leader, I am being trustful, transparent, communicating openly, and being a servant leader who's focusing on modeling the way to ensure that I'm saying and doing what it is that I believe, and I am doing what I say. I would also be making sure that I'm inspiring a shared vision for all of us to follow, that I'm challenging the process, that I'm making sure that I'm encouraging others to do the work and have the things that they need to do the work, and making sure that we have a positive environment where parents are proud to send their child to us to be educated.
Any questions on Dr. Phillips?
I do not see any. We proceed.
Okay. Great.
So the next candidate we're presenting to you is Dr. Mary Ann Simon. Dr. Simon serves in the position of regional superintendent of schools in the Duval County Public Schools in Jacksonville, Florida. In that capacity, she oversees a region that includes 35 elementary schools and approximately 40,000 students. Prior to the reorganization of the administrator structure in Duval County, she actually oversaw 60 elementary schools. Recently, due to its size, this responsibility was divided into two positions. Prior to serving in that role, Dr. Simon was a successful elementary school principal, assistant principal, and classroom ESC teacher. After contacting her references, her references provided the following information regarding Dr. Simon. She is self-motivated, driven, compassionate, and a trustworthy educational leader, a team player who is data-driven, and a leader who people look up to in Duval County School District. Responsible, she is a relationship builder who attends as many school and community functions as possible. She always has your back and is a workaholic. She's definitely prepared to serve in the role of superintendent. She understands politics, is a great listener and analyzer while seeing views from both sides as she builds positive relationships. She addresses her constituents' concerns in an exceptional manner. When she served as a school leader, principal, she was a phenomenal school leader, respectful, clear leader, soft-spoken, but yet has high expectations. Implement an administrative approach that includes high community engagement. When she was an elementary school principal, she moved her school from an F rating to a C rating in one year. She's in the middle as she keeps politics in perspective, always makes decisions that are under best interest of children, willingness to hold people accountable. She addresses parental concerns and demonstrates the willingness to have one-on-one conversations, manages the change process well, visits schools and classrooms. She is effective in keeping a modest stature. However, you always know that she is thinking, as she also keeps her outward emotions in check. She handled the COVID issues in Duval County extremely well. She's creative in structuring staffing positions throughout her schools to address student needs while also considering budgetary constraints.
Hello, I am Dr. Mary Ann Simon. And so for the first question, why am I interested in this position? Well, I have spent my entire career in education, first as an ESC teacher, then a specialist, an assistant principal, principal, and now as a region superintendent. And I absolutely love what I do. And I feel like the superintendent position is just that next level for me, where I can make a greater impact on a school district. And why Sarasota County? Well, Sarasota County is a A school district with a fantastic staff and school board who want even more for their students. I love your goal of becoming the number one school district in the state of Florida, because when we meet that goal, we are meeting that goal for our students. We are making them the most successful students that they can possibly be, and I love that goal. And so leadership strengths of mine, first, I will tell you a relationship building. If you were to speak to the principals that I currently work with, they will tell you that I am always there for them, whether it is to help them celebrate something fantastic happening at their school, or whether we're troubleshooting a particular problem or issue that has come up. They are very comfortable coming to me with all of those things. And I just feel that relationship building is so important, especially in this day and age in education, where we are asking our administrators and teachers to do some very hard lifting, very hard work. And without that relationship piece being there, it kind of takes away their motivation to do that work. And so very happy to say that that is something that keeps all of us going in the region that I currently work in. My second strength, I would say, is being data-driven. Something else my principals will tell you is that every conversation we have is around the data coming out of our schools. And so we meet monthly at PLCs to talk globally across our region about our data. And then, of course, weekly, I'm in schools talking about individual students and individual teachers and how we can help improve instruction happening in the classrooms. With that being data-driven, I also have very high expectations, and the principals know this as well. We set those expectations at the beginning of the school year, and the one thing that they know is with those high expectations, I am going to be there to provide all of the supports and resources necessary for them to meet those high expectations. And because I do that for them, they work really hard to meet those expectations. Finally, I would say I'm very collaborative in nature. When I'm making some big decisions, I want to make sure that all the right people are at the table to help me make those decisions. After doing some research on Sarasota County, one of the most important challenges is going to be that goal of becoming the number one school district in Florida. And so looking at the data, how are we going to do that? The one thing that stood out to me the most is the areas of proficiency. In ELA, math, and science, those scores have not gone back to where they were six years ago. And so we not only have to get back to where we were six years ago, but we need to push even further if we're going to match or beat the, some of the other school districts. I also noticed that the middle school acceleration and the college and career acceleration have steadily increased each year for Sarasota, but it's still not at a level where some of our other A school districts are. And so I think there's some room there for us to make some improvements as well. But if I had to pick one area of where we're going to start this work, it is definitely going to be on ELA. We know that if we can increase the reading abilities of our students, we are going to impact all of those grade cells that I just spoke about. And so how are we going to do that? We are going to start in our K-3 classrooms. First, I would want to make sure I do a deep dive of the curriculum that's been chosen. We want to make sure we have curriculum in place that is following the science of reading. We need very explicit instruction happening for our students in phonemic awareness, phonics, oral language and vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. Once we make sure we have the right curriculum in place, we want to then look at our professional development plan. How are we supporting teachers to make sure that the programs we've chosen are being taught with fidelity? And how are we supporting them in working with students that might need more than just what everyone else is getting? How do we help them write those prescriptive, individualized lessons for their students? And then finally, I want to follow that up by having staff And then, finally, I want to follow that up by having staff members from the district in our classrooms, again, making sure that those programs are taught with fidelity and making sure that they're supporting schools, students, in that individualized, needs-based assessment of what needs to happen next for our students. Finally, besides the academic pieces of our challenge, another challenge I would like to look at is making sure that we bring our community together with our school system with a focus on success of all of our students. And we cannot do it alone. We need our community to come together. And so, as a school district, we need to come up with a list of needs that we have for our schools, and then do some matching with community-based partners who can come in and help us meet those goals. And that is going to help Sarasota become the number one school district in the state of Florida.
I don't see any on the board. We can continue.
Okay. Candidate number five is Mr. Charlie Van Zant. Charlie is an experienced superintendent, four years in Clay County, and school board member, 14 years, all in Clay County, Florida. He is also a decorated military officer with significant leadership accomplishments and commendations. He has a Master of Arts in Organizational Leadership from Regent University. Recently retired from the military, he is attracted to Sarasota and believes he has the experience and leadership ability to move the district forward and rebuild community trust. He also taught technology for two years and 33 years altogether in the military. His references called him a servant leader with a strong moral compass and high integrity. Education runs deeply in his family. He is a systems thinker that would bring a non-traditional leadership approach to the work. His terms on the Clay County School Board provide him with multiple perspectives regarding school governance and leadership. He's given credit by everybody I spoke with for hiring good people and trusting them to do their work. He is a consensus builder who values the choices of others, the voices of others, but confident and courageous in making difficult decisions. He believes strongly in schools focusing on making sure students become proficient in core academic areas. And in Clay County, for those four years, he emphasized career tech ed, and 10% graduation increases occurred over four years, community partnerships, and grants. He is energetic, confident, and articulate, and all of his references said he was easy to relate to. Charles Van Zant.
It's great to be here with you today. I'm Charlie Van Zant, and I'm interested in becoming the Sarasota County School Superintendent because of the resolve and tenacity the school board has already shown. You've demonstrated that you understand what the senior leader of the organization must do, and you understand in your district it's not being done the way you want it. What can I bring to the table? I have over 30 years of leadership experience. I was trained in strategic leadership by the United States Army extensively. I did every dirty job from the rank of private to retiring last year as Lieutenant Colonel. I'm a strategic thinker. A lot of people will tell you that and not really understand what that means, but I have the wherewithal to plan and move Sarasota County District schools from where they are to where I sense this school board wants to take them. I've done that as a superintendent in Florida. We've moved together with my former team, third-grade reading rates. We've moved graduation rates, all in a positive direction. And most importantly, to Sarasota's opportunity gaps, is we did that with all subgroups. We tightened up the achievement gap. Regardless of ethnicity, free and reduced lunch status, all students rose under my leadership. I'm a servant leader. As a superintendent before, I realized that I didn't have everything I needed, so I sought a master's degree specifically in organizational leadership. The tenants of servant leadership include vision, humility, service, service before self, trust. I model integrity, character, excellence. I motivate others well. I have an extensive background in human resources that you can already see by reviewing my resume, but specifically in open communication styles. The senior leader of the organization has to be able to communicate up well to the school board and the ways that you want to be talked to, and the things that you want to be talked about with, and the frequency that you set. And we also have to be able to talk to everybody else on the team. Sarasota County has over 5,000 employees now. That's a lot of people to keep up with. So, you have to have a leader that understands how to quickly assess situations, quickly assess people and what they're good at, and get the right people in the right spot on the team to do the job that you're hiring the school superintendent to do. You'll hear me say a lot that I'll delegate my authority and that I'll empower people, but the responsibility at the end of the day clearly lands on the superintendent's desk. I look forward to talking with you more. My assessment of Sarasota County schools leads me to believe that complacency is your largest challenge at the moment. And what I mean by that is the plans that I've reviewed lack strategy. They lack strategic planning. Sarasota's been really good for the two decades that we've been evaluated as Florida school districts, and has consistently been an A-district even when many others weren't. But specifically, your reading plan is out of date. Just knowing what I know about Sarasota County, I would have expected with only 42% at the free and reduced lunch rate that you would easily be in the high 70s or low 80s district-wide in your proficiency in reading. Why does that matter? Well, Sarasota's barely an A-district based on your ELA scores now. And next year, in elementary schools, learning gains will be counted as half of your grades. So, the proficiency will only count for 50%. Learning gains will count for 50%. That's just the grades. The more important part is you have children literally being left behind. Your achievement gap in your special needs population is widening. It's going the wrong direction because your reading plan seems to be very dated. What you're using in it, the systems and programs are old. Somewhere in Florida, it became okay to put struggling readers in front of iReady or another software program and just let it try to teach kids how to read. It will not work that way. Your reading plan cites Hegarty, which has a little phonics, but it's not nearly strong enough for struggling kids. And so, we have to change that. We'll have to quickly come in and assess. I'll ask for some kind of transition team to help me quickly assess what's going right and wrong in your district currently. And then, we'll move from that into some teacher training around a well-researched, phonics-based, proven reading program. There are plenty of them out there. But we'll have to get everybody on board fairly quickly to change practice a little bit. And once we get things moving in the right direction, if you hire me, I'm not coming on until mid to late July, and school starts in a couple of weeks after that. So, we're going to have to quickly pivot. If districts don't pivot next year, their school grades will drop, and their students that are struggling will not get the help that they need and deserve. So, again, I look forward to a chance to talk about this a little bit more with you further.
You may continue. I have some more questions.
Final candidate.
So, the final candidate out of the six we're presenting is Dr. Caprice Young. Now, Dr. Young, we believe we can tell you she's a little bit more of a non-traditional candidate, but I'd like to go through her background and what her references told us. She is the founding CEO of California Charter Schools Association. However, she was previously the president of the Los Angeles Unified School District Board of Education. She has a strong background in charter schools, but also has a strong background in public education. She believes as Florida moves ever more quickly down the road to school choice, traditional public schools must learn how to compete through academic excellence and embrace their role in community building. She's an experienced transformational executive and superintendent with proven leadership in board governance and executive director positions. She is the former National Superintendent of Lifelong Learning, a nonprofit organization serving schools responsible for 49,000 opportunity youth students in five states. She has led Magnolia Public International, I'm sorry, Magnolia Public Schools, and I lead California. Her leadership experience spans multi-state international operations. She's an ed tech expert and former CEO of subsidiary, a publicly traded 14-500 company. She received the CORO, which is the Crystal Eagle Award for Excellence in Public Service, the California State University Los Angeles Educator of the Year Award, and Robinson Humanitarian Achievement Award from Yale. Dr. Young serves on boards of several organizations, including the Ford Foundation, L.A. Institute, EverDriven, and olivella.com. Her references tell us the following. She has the fortitude to take on huge challenges. Her dedication to education is strong and ingrained in her. She's one that will, she is one that will jump into any fire and put it out in a professional way. Courageous, passionate, bright, accomplished in many ways, very strategic thinker, fabulous understanding in using it to close achievement gaps, focused on STEM and STEAM. People love to attend her meetings because she used plain language and made sure everyone understood what the issues were. She has a huge array of network contacts focused on schools with less-than-ideal achievement and brought about success. Ushered in our first strategic plan in the Magnolias Public School. Great at prioritizing and not getting bogged down in unimportant details. Skilled CEO, very innovative and creative, tenacious, and always driven for student success. Dr. Young is also originally from Florida. So, with that, we'll play her video.
Hi, my name is Dr. Caprice Young, and I'd love to tell you why I'm interested in this position and what strengths that I possess that can enable me to be successful in leading the Sarasota schools. I graduated from King High School in Tampa, Florida, and am looking forward to getting back to Florida. I am so impressed by Sarasota's commitment to excellence in education, including arts and sports and STEM. And as a former charter school leader, I'm actually really impressed by the diversity of educational experiences that you have created for your students. And I am committed to building on that dedication to a learner-focused education for each individual Sarasota student. I'm a strong leader who is committed to high student achievement, not just closing achievement gaps, but raising the bar for every student. I'm an honest, effective communicator who values transparency, and I know that schools can't achieve their mission alone. We need to work closely with foundations, community partners, county elected officials, communities of faith, families, and, most importantly, students to ensure that we're successful. I have a strong record of increasing academic achievement among all subgroups of students, every single one, and it's because I make decisions based on data. I use that data and the input from the teachers and educators in our schools in conjunction with learning science from our top research universities to establish that track record of improvement in primary reading scores, in English learner success, and advancement of students with special needs. And I can tell you, as the mother of students with special needs, they are a high priority for me. While visionary might be a little high and mighty for me, I am a strategic leader that knows that in order to implement any educational program, those programs must capture the minds and the hearts of everyone involved. We have to empower principals and teachers to do their very best work on behalf of students and families because the school site is where the real work happens. And finally, I know that as superintendent, the buck stops with me. I'm a fiscally responsible educational leader who has been responsible for budgets as high as $8 billion, and I know that I have a deep responsibility to the taxpayer to manage the resources effectively and efficiently because I know that when we do that, we ensure not just the success of our current students, but the students in the next generation and the next. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak with you. Hi, Sarasota. I'm Dr. Caprice Young, and this is the answer to the second question, which is, what would you say are the most important challenges facing us, and what would I do about them? So, honestly, I think that the most important challenge facing Sarasota is that you are an A-school district. I mean, and congratulations for being an A-school district. That's awesome. A for awesome. And I believe that Sarasota can be an A-plus school district by closing the achievement gaps and making sure that every student in Sarasota can be that A-student. And the way to become a school district where every student is an A-student is to have the very best teachers. And right now, there's a teacher crisis and a teacher shortage going on around the country, and especially here. We need to focus on creating a positive environment for all of our professionals, making sure that our teachers feel loved and supported, and that they actually have a positive environment in which to work, professional leadership, and that every day they come to school knowing that they have the full support that they need from their community to be the great teachers that they are. And that starts with principals. I mean principals PAL, the principals on the school sites. I believe that principals are the key to success. Great teachers love working for great principals, so I recruit and invest in site leadership talent. And great, positive learning environments start at the very top. So, I will spend every minute focused on ensuring that our school sites can be every student's happy place and every educator's most desired professional working environment. Look, I'm not blind. I know things have been a bit heated in Sarasota politically, and I've worked in all kinds of political environments. I'll do my very best every day to keep everyone focused on the students. I read the responses to the community input you all provided during this process, and some of the words you used to describe what you wanted in your next superintendent were integrity, inclusivity, transparency, experienced, and apolitical. I hear you. I come to you as an open-minded leader who is 100% focused on students. I would be honored to be your superintendent. Thank you.
If we may, just because I didn't want to take, I don't want to get up during this. Can we take a five-minute break and then resume so we can go back to the next steps? All right. We will resume at 10:40, so it's four minutes. All right, we will resume at 10:40, so it's four minutes.
That's okay. She understands that. [inaudible]
Very good. If we may, just because I didn't want to take, I don't want to get up during this. Could we take a five-minute break and then resume so we can go back to the next steps? All right, we will resume at 10:40, so it's four minutes.
That's okay. She understands that.
Very good. If we may, just because I didn't want to take, I don't want to get up during this. Could we take a five-minute break and then resume so we can go back to the next steps? All right, we will resume at 10:40, so it's four minutes.
That's okay. She understands that.
So in that context, I mean, did anyone else, any other board members have any other applicants that were not in the shortlist that you wanted to discuss? Anyone? Okay, see none. So when it comes to Mr., I think it was Mr., Dr. Neal, excuse me, do board members want to entertain considering Dr. Neal as well? I don't see any additional comments, so are you, you have the mic on. Okay, Mrs. Rose.
Sure, I would entertain Dr. Neal.
Okay, so almost adding that to number seven.
Seven.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Does everyone have an opportunity to rank them? Because I think that's what our next step is. You need a few minutes. I don't see any else comments, so if everyone, is everyone prepared to? Dr. Joel, if you want to kind of walk us through how you'd like us to do this?
Yeah. So what I'd like to do is just start with Mrs. Marinelli, and if you would just kind of go fairly slowly through one through six, I'll do the tally. So one being most interested in. Okay, maybe not. Give you a second there. One through six, and now we've, actually, we got Neal. So if you want to put Neal into your six, put Neal into your six. Yeah, one would be the most interest, you're most interested in. Six would be, you know, you're interested in, but it's six.
And take your time. If you guys need a couple of minutes, we can, you ready? Ready? Mrs. Ro, are you ready?
Sure.
Mrs. Rose, I'm sorry. We'll just go that way just to give Mrs. Marinelli a moment.
Mr. Terrence Connor, number one.
Okay, hold on one second. All right.
Dr. Josiah John Phillips, two.
All right.
Dr. Neal, three.
Okay.
And Charles, Mr. Charles Van Zant, four.
Okay.
Caprice, Dr. Caprice Young, five.
Okay.
And Dr. Allison Foster, six.
Very good, thank you.
And Mary Ann Simon, seven.
Okay. Anybody else ready to go?
I'm ready to go. I'll go. I had Dr. Phillips, number one. Dr., oh no, Mr. Van Zant, two. Mr. Connor, three. Dr. Foster, four. Then I could add Dr. Neal, five. Dr. Young, six. And I guess Dr. Simon, seven.
Okay, I do.
Who's next? Mr. Enos or Mr. Edwards?
I'm happy to go.
Go ahead.
Terrence Connor, one. Dr. Young, two. Dr. Neal, three.
Okay.
And Charles, Mr. Charles Van Zant, four.
Okay.
Caprice, Dr. Caprice Young, five.
Okay.
And Dr. Allison Foster, six.
Very good, thank you.
And Mary Ann Simon, seven.
Okay. Anybody else ready to go?
I'm ready to go. I'll go. I had Dr. Phillips, number one. Dr., oh no, Mr. Van Zant, two. Mr. Connor, three. Dr. Foster, four. Then I could add Dr. Neal, five. Dr. Young, six. And I guess Dr. Simon, seven.
Okay, I do.
Who's next? Mr. Enos or Mr. Edwards?
I'm happy to go.
Go ahead.
Terrence Connor, one. Dr. Young, two. Dr. Neal, three.
Okay.
And Charles, Mr. Charles Van Zant, four.
Okay.
Caprice, Dr. Caprice Young, five.
Okay.
And Dr. Allison Foster, six.
Very good, thank you.
And Mary Ann Simon, seven.
Okay. Anybody else ready to go?
I'm ready to go. I'll go. I had Dr. Phillips, number one. Dr., oh no, Mr. Van Zant, two. Mr. Connor, three. Dr. Foster, four. Then I could add Dr. Neal, five. Dr. Young, six. And I guess Dr. Simon, seven.
Okay, I do.
Who's next? Mr. Enos or Mr. Edwards?
I'm happy to go.
Go ahead.
Terrence Connor, one. Dr. Young, two. Dr. Neal, three. Dr. Phillips, four. Dr. Young, five. And Dr. Foster, six.
Before you, Tom, can I ask, who was your number two again?
Dr. Young.
Okay, I think you said Young twice.
Oh, sorry. Dr. Young is two.
Okay.
Dr. Neal, three.
Three.
Dr. Phillips, four. Dr. Young, five. And Dr. Foster, six.
Before you, Tom, can I ask, who was your number two again?
Dr. Young.
Okay, I think you said Young twice.
Oh, sorry. Dr. Young is two.
Okay.
Dr. Neal, three.
Three.
Dr. Phillips, four.
Okay.
Dr. Simon, five.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Enos or Mrs. Marinelli? And if you guys need a second, that's totally fine.
I'll go ahead and go. I have Dr. Foster, one. I have Dr. Simon, two. I have Dr. Van Zant, I believe he's got ADHD, three. I have Terrence Connor, four. I have Dr. Phillips, five. I have Mr. Neal, six. And Caprice, Dr. Young, seven.
Thank you.
Okay. I had Terrence Connor as one. Number two was Dr. Neal. Number three was Dr. Phillips. Number four was Dr. Foster. Number five was Mr. Van Zant. Number six was Dr. Simon. And number seven was Dr. Young.
Okay, very good. Would you give us two, three minutes to tally these?
Yep. What time is it? We'll do a short recess for five minutes so they can tally everything, and then we'll reconvene at 11:05. I can't really see that, it's a glare right there, so maybe it's more than five minutes, but 11:05 we'll reconvene.
I do have a quick question.
Mr. Edwards?
Yeah. In order for us to perhaps go from the seven to a smaller number, I was hoping that we could, as a board, discuss some...
Perhaps the exception of Joe Phillips, who said it's only Sarasota, are probably being considered or having conversations with other districts. But Connor, as far as we know.
Yeah, I know that Dr. Simon was also a candidate in several searches.
I thought I had read that on a few, but I just wanted to... So I know that we're...I know that we have one day. And my feeling is, I don't want to rush this process because we have one chance for our students and our community on this. So if...and this would be the will of the board. There was one other person that I had looked at, and I just want to make sure that if any of our top three take a position somewhere else, we have another one in line. And I was looking at Dr. Matthew Neal from Colorado.
That's...I'm glad you brought that question up. So that's a great point. So the six that McPherson had shortlisted, that's theirs based on qualifications, I think, on just what we listed out. If there were any one of the applicants that any board member wants to bring forward, by all means, it's absolutely welcomed. And I agree with you. While organizationally, operationally, for next Monday and Tuesday, yeah, just for historical reference, we did five candidates in one day. It's tough, but we did it. But I agree with you. I want to make sure we vet the ones that we want to vet. And if it's four, if it's five, if it's two, we just do what we believe is right, and we will schedule accordingly.
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards?
Yeah, I also had Dr. Neal on my shortlist. So my curiosity is how, from the recruiter's perspective, why he didn't make it to the shortlist. Because there's people in your shortlist that I'm not even interested in speaking to.
Okay. That's a fair question, Mr. Edwards. And as we looked at... Did Marjorie do you?
No.
Okay. So when we looked at size of district and experience, and if you look at Neal's...well, I'm just looking, I pulled up his resume right now. I mean, there's no question...there's no reason to say that he doesn't have the skillset to be successful. But, you know, we, again, were looking at the criteria, and in our mind, one year in Woodland Park, Colorado, is...he's currently president of consulting company, so he's not actively engaged in the superintendency as we speak. And then prior to that, he had six years in the Middle East, working in an American school concept. And then one year in Sweetwater, Wyoming, which is a very, very small place. So it was, in terms of complexity, we felt that, you know, he hadn't had that breadth and depth of experience in terms of system, working with an overall system. But, you know, clearly, he's got some things that, you know, he could advocate for.
So in that context, I mean, did anyone else, any other board members, have any other applicants that were not in the shortlist that you wanted to discuss? Anyone? Okay, see none. So when it comes to Mr...I think it was Mr....Dr. Neal, excuse me. Do board members want to entertain, considering Dr. Neal as well? I don't see any additional comments, so are you...you have a mic on. Okay, Mrs. Rose?
Sure, I would entertain Dr. Neal.
Okay, so almost adding that to number seven.
Seven.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Does everyone have an opportunity to rank them? Because I think that's what our next step is. You need a few minutes. I don't see any else comments. So if everyone...is everyone prepared to...Dr. Joel, if you want to kind of walk us through how you'd like us to do this?
Yeah. So what I'd like to do is just start with Mrs. Marinelli. And if you would just kind of go fairly slowly through one through six, I'll do the tally. So one being most interested in. Okay, maybe not. Give you a second there. One through six, and now we've...actually, we got Neal. So if you want to put Neal into your six, put Neal into your six. Yeah, one would be the most interest...you're most interested in. Six would be, you know, you're interested in, but it's six.
And take your time. If you guys need a couple of minutes, we can...
Yeah.
You ready? Ready? Mrs. Rose, are you ready?
Sure.
Mrs. Rose, I'm sorry. We'll just go that way, just to give Mrs. Marinelli a moment.
Mr. Terrence Connor, number one.
Okay, hold on one second. All right.
Dr. Josiah John Phillips, two.
All right.
Dr. Neal, three.
Okay.
And Charles...Mr. Charles Van Zant, four.
Okay.
Caprice...Dr. Caprice Young, five.
Okay.
And Dr. Allison Foster, six.
Very good. Thank you.
And Mary Ann Simon, seven.
Anybody else ready to go?
I'm ready to go. I'll go. I had Dr. Phillips, number one. Doctor...oh, no, Mr. Van Zant, two. Mr. Connor, three. Dr. Foster, four. Then I could add Dr. Neal, five. Dr. Young, six. And I guess Dr. Simon, seven.
Okay, I do.
Who's next? Mr. Enos or Mr. Edwards?
I'm happy to go.
Go ahead.
Terrence Connor, one. Dr. Young, two. Dr. Neal, three. Dr. Phillips, four. Dr. Young, five. And Dr. Foster, six.
Before you...Tom, can I ask? Who was your number two again?
Dr. Young.
Okay. I think you said Young twice.
Oh, sorry. Dr. Young is two.
Okay.
Dr. Neal, three. Dr. Phillips, four. Dr. Simon, five. And Dr. Foster, six.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Enos or Mrs. Marinelli? And if you guys need a second, that's totally fine.
I'll go ahead and go. I have Dr. Foster, one. I have Dr. Simon, two. I have Dr. Van Zant, I believe he's got ADHD, and three. I have Terrence Connor, four. I have Dr. Phillips, five. I have Mr. Neal, six. And Caprice, Dr. Young, seven.
Thank you.
I had Terrence Connor as one. Number two was Dr. Neal. Number three was Dr. Phillips. Number four was Dr. Foster. Number five was Mr. Van Zant. Number six was Dr. Simon. And number seven was Dr. Young.
Okay, very good. Would you give us two, three minutes to tally these?
Yep. What time is it? We'll do a short recess for five minutes so they can tally everything, and then we'll reconvene at 11:05. I can't really see that, it's a glare right there. So maybe it's more than five minutes, but 11:05 we'll reconvene.
I do have a quick question.
Mr. Edwards?
Yeah. In order for us to perhaps go from the seven to a smaller number, I was hoping that we could, as a board, discuss some of our choices so that we hear, and the public hears, some of our rationale.
Sure. Do you want to wait until the board's tally?
Yeah, I would wait till...
Perfect. Yeah, I agree. Are you guys ready?
We are.
All right. Perfect. So we are reconvening. If you guys are finishing up with the tally, I will kick it off over to you guys.
Okay. So as the tally goes, the way the system's set up, low score has the highest ranking and the highest weighting. So Connor had 10. Dr. Phillips had 15. Dr. Neal had 19. And then both Dr. Foster and Mr. Van Zant had 21. So your top three, which would...your top two would be, and it's pretty clear, it's Connor and Phillips. And so what I'd like to do, and I think Mr. Edwards had a great idea, let's have a dialogue now, and then let's do a reranking of the three that are on the bottom, and see if we can reach a consensus on that. So let's have a conversation about anybody you'd like to talk about, and go from there.
Question on the ranking, please. So the top two would have been Phillips and Connor, and then who would have come in third and fourth?
Neal.
Neal, third.
Neal, third. And fourth was tied.
Tied with Foster and Van Zant.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm pulling up...is it Mr. or Dr. Neal?
Doctor.
I'm going to pull up his resume file, because I don't have it accessible to me. Did anyone want to comment on...I think Mr. Edwards mentioned, and I'm happy to go first, or...but if anyone wants to comment on strengths, I would encourage everyone to keep it to the positives, that's not as to why you went to the direction you went. Mr. Edwards, did you want to start, or...
I don't know what describes as positive or negative, but Mr. Van Zant is a mister, not a doctor. That, in my mind, disqualifies him. Number two, in his cover letter, he described himself as a staunch conservative. And we just got to school board members' email today from...and it's public record, so I'm comfortable to...from Brandon Ludwig, an email that came to us, executive director of Florida Young Republicans, giving a reference letter from Mr. Van Zant, and I quote, "If you're looking for a conservative superintendent, that disqualifies it for me right from the get-go. Because our community, as we've all heard multiple times, is divided." And that just brings lightning rod right into the conversation. And so from my perspective, that person didn't make my list.
Are there any other...any other comments? Is that it?
Dr. Phillips, from my point of view, I think is worth a conversation. My bigger concern also is background. His background of being CIO, which is information technology, would be a welcome addition here. I didn't see a whole lot of academics in the background. That was a concern of mine. A good leader, though, knows how to work with those folks and bring them on board, so I'm willing to have that conversation. I think those are my bigger comments. I think we can probably navigate through...I'd like to try and get it down to five, if we can, at a maximum.
Yeah.
Even, you know, less, you know. But those are my comments initially. We can talk further.
Thank you.
If we need to.
And the other members? Mrs. Marinelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the positives, I think everybody had a positive or two. If you could, like, put that all together, and you'd have your ideal superintendent. But everybody would want that person. But I...on Mr. Connor, I really liked his background when he talked about the academic piece and the accountability, the data. That really...he stood out for me on that one. As...and Dr. Neal, the reason I brought him up, too, is because of his experiences were very different than the norm. Having that international background of...and having...coming from a military family or members of military. My nephews had gone to military schools in Japan, and I know how difficult that is to really run a United States school in a foreign country, plus being on a military base. So that...I liked that breadth of experience for him. And basically, you know, my only...and I don't even want to say drawback, is I believe it was Dr. Phillips who has the experience of the chief information officer. Not...I think that's a very important position. I just am not quite as sure that we'll have the academic for the data moving forward that way. But it's not meant as a negative at all. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other members? Mrs. Rose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was very interested in Terrence Connor from the beginning of his resume and his instructional expertise in moving two districts in their state ranking up the ladder, something that I think is extraordinarily important here in Sarasota, considering that we have been either what I call flatlining, going nowhere, or in decline recently. The...so I'm very interested in his instructional leadership and ability to move this district. And Phillips, I caught my attention with his focus in on the operations of our district, focusing on data, phonics base, and particularly in progress monitoring, I think are all key points.
Mr. Enos, do you have any...I don't want to...
Yes, thank you. I think also, I know that it's been mentioned a few times about narrowing to three. I mean, I think at this point, I think we've got lots of qualified candidates that bring a variety of different expertise to this. I mean, if you look at Dr. Foster, you know, she has been a teacher here, graduated from here, her kids are here. I mean, she's been put on the interim role, but you also have other people, such as, you know, as we talked about, is Mr. Connor. You also have, you know, Mr. Phillips or Dr. Phillips. You have a variety. I would absolutely think that we probably would need to be somewhere. And as Mr. Neal didn't present any type of videos today or anything, so we haven't really had the input of being able to look at what his message would be. I definitely think that it may be, like my recommendation, that we interview five people, and that we look at whoever we had in the rankings potentially at the bottom. You know, Ms. Young is...it seems to be that she is very qualified, but also, I don't think she's been in the arena of the...in regard to public school system, et cetera, et cetera, based on where she takes her expertise is. But she's highly...more than highly qualified to be able to do that, and I know that she definitely has a lot of enthusiasm. So with those things, as I would say, is that I'm looking at towards E5 and even potentially doing six, because I believe, as Ms. Marinelli said, and I believe the rest of the board, that we want to make sure that we don't cut any corners, and that anybody who potentially could be a good candidate shouldn't be overlooked, just because of time constraints. Because I believe that, especially with what's happened in the past, we need to, as you said, the consistency, and we need to make sure we make the very best selection as we continue, you know, even with... Mr. Van Zant, the one thing I did like...I don't know if I said his name right. Maybe I'm talking about Ronnie Van Zant. Nope.
About the same name.
He did talk about...exactly. He did talk about, which I thought was interesting, is he talked about pivoting, is that we're starting and we need to move, because ultimately, as I think all of us are focused on pre-K, K through three, I think that we have to make some...we have to make some decisions, especially with that, and to be able to start going in the right manner.
Thank you. Yeah, so I...for Dr. Connor...if I have this right, yes. I'm sorry, excuse me. Mr. Connor is for Hillsborough. I liked that he mentioned and focused in on early literacy and accountability systems. Those are two huge areas of focus. Certainly, the size and scope, and also his ability to move, be a part of the significant ranking increasing from 20th to 8th, and then 36th to 19th, I think those are...caught my attention. I know that when you're at the top top, sometimes it's harder to move those jumps, but...so I don't...that's not missed on me, but I also like to, you know, certainly, that did jump out at me. I think that...let me see here, I want to make sure he has the right title. Dr. Phillips jumped out. What I liked about Dr. Phillips was there was a very specific plan in place that...of all of them, I would say that the one, and that's why I ranked him top, is that he had a 90-day plan up to 60, 30. To me, I think that's really important, you know, very much so. I think that it's great to talk about these things that we want. I think a lot of us want to see early literacy. We want to see accountability and transparency, but almost from the get-go, really almost giving a metric in place of what we could expect to see. And I think that helps guide us. One, it's just ownership right off the ability, so illustrating his accountability. So that stood out to me, because I didn't see anyone else do that. And also, again, Broward, large organization. I know he's got a different...he's only been there for a year. But the other part is that if you're a system...he talked a lot about systems, and to me, I think I hear us talk a lot of times about, we have great people, but we don't have systems in place to really get us to the next level. And so that stood out to me. And if you're a good leader, the academic piece, if you have an instructional leader underneath that, or working collaboratively, I think that would fill that piece. But that was one area that stood out to me. And again, I think Mr. Van Zant also had some components that were more detail-oriented. Certainly, I understand the reading being a key focus, but also recognized, I liked how he talked about the strategic plan and evaluating it, and then pivoting. I think both him, Mr....Dr. Phillips and Van Zant said that. I...you know, as far as Dr. Neal, I will say that I don't...I'm trying to find his resume up here. I did not have him as my shortlist, but since two board members mentioned it, there are other ones dropped off significantly. I want to say Dr. Foster. Oh, thank you so much. Dr. Foster, I think she's done a great job. I think that it's definitely challenging to navigate an interim position at the same time. I know that there's some other higher-level positions that she's trying to work and navigate at the same time, but I've been appreciative of some of the out-of-the-box thinking that she's put forward. So those were the...my four were very clearly of the top four. I will have to read Dr. Neal. But again, since two board members...the other ones could have significantly dropped off, so to me, felt okay, fine with that. I...you know, I am of the motion, I think that if we are convening, and really, if there's a strong sense of those top five, because I think it was one, two, three, then we're tied at the fourth, certainly we can make that work and schedule it. I think that we only get one shot at this, and it really does make a big difference when you have the opportunity to see someone in person. I do like the videos, because there were questions, but there's a really different dynamic. I mean, when you're taking a job interview in a public arena like this, it's very different. But I think it's a really good test to see, you know, how that individual will do under pressure, for lack of a better term. I mean, this is not a low-stress job. And also, the one-on-ones...Mr. Edwards, I know you mentioned that, and I know I'd mentioned that to you guys. I said that, you know, that I would like to incorporate that, and we are for the second day. We can certainly tweak the schedule. But one-on-ones, I think, are vitally important, because, again, it's an unusual moment to be here in front of everyone interviewing, and so to be able to pick up on the energy and communication skillset when you're on a one-on-one basis, because we, as board members, work with the superintendent in a one-on-one basis, I think is vital. So I'm not opposed to keeping it to five. I don't know if there's any additional thoughts. I don't know if you guys wanted to guide us through that, but those are my takeaways.
This is your search. So if you believe you should interview five or six, we'll work with you to make that happen.
The only other...Mrs. Rose, go ahead.
Is there any thought or possibility... Is there any thought or possibility of where we narrow it down again before our one-on-ones, so that maybe we change the calendar a little bit? I feel like focusing in on five folks, you as the candidates, excuse me, you as the experts in this area are telling us to narrow it down to get some quality conversation, perhaps we can modify this a bit and meet again on the 13th and narrow it down, and then that same week do our one-on-ones, so that we're still all done the week of the 11th, I believe it is, 11th, 12th, and 13th, add a day in, so that we are essentially, before we get to the one-on-one part, narrowing it down to two or three. It seems like a lot to keep it at five to me, but I'm okay with keeping it at five to do the whole board and whole, I don't know, it's just a food for thought.
Well, the one, the one concern I have, I believe we'll share that, is we have not had the opportunity to vet Dr. Neal. So we haven't spoken to references, we haven't checked his social media, we haven't dug deep into why he left, but my understanding is that in a very small school district in Wyoming and left after one year. And so that, these are the reasons why we didn't include him in terms of a group that we were going to present to you. So that, you're just looking at, and I understand this, the paper, whereas we didn't have the opportunity to do that in-depth analysis for you. So that's a concern.
But, but we will. But, you know, I want to, what Dr. Ferry just said, I just want to underscore the fact that when we went through this whole list, it, he didn't emerge, and he didn't emerge because of just some things that stuck, stuck out in terms of our analysis of his resume, right? Smaller schools, one year only, not to take away from the deep experience he had overseas, but it hasn't really been applicable here, and now he's a consultant. Doesn't mean he's not going to be your next superintendent, just want you to know that we don't have enough information on him right now to, to be able to put that forward. Now, if you're going to bring in Dr. Neal, we're going to call him today, and if you want, we could even have a video by next week that you could look at or at some point. I mean, we could, we could do it any other way, but we weren't expecting anybody to be inserted, but we certainly don't want to stand in his way, because he could very well be, somebody comes in here, wins the job-
Right.
-and does, does tremendously.
Mrs. Rose?
Just, any thoughts on modifying the calendar so that we are efficient in who we do interview or perhaps coming to, together again this week to look at Neal's video? I'm just not sure. We're looking for your advice.
Is to go, so I think the question was to, before going on the one-on-one interviews with board members, if it would be prudent to have another round, whether it be the interviews, I guess, in the board room? Is that what you're saying? To be interviewed by the board and then shortlist to them, and then they do an interview one-on-one? My only thing is that they're here, you might as well seize the moment, it's the only part that I have, but, and I, I mean, I, my, I do like the idea of concluding and the decision, if we possibly can, on the 20th. I think that gives us the best timeframe to, I mean, we're so close, and I don't, just having done this before, I think that when you see it, it's not, the person gravitates pretty quickly to you, if you will, or the top two or three. Go ahead.
Is there any reason we're waiting till the 20th? We're waiting a week after we do the whole board and whole community committee meeting that we're waiting a week? I feel like there's so many superintendent openings and so much competition out there. What are we gaining by waiting a week to come back together to make our decision? And in addition to that, I just want to point out, it looks like that decision is slated for the 20th, and that right now is scheduled to be like a 12-hour day. So I would like to, for consideration, to move that final decision to the end of next week.
16th, yeah, that, that would work for me. Mrs., I have Mr. Edwards and Mrs. and Mr. Enos, but to respond to the scheduling, I'm not, not opposed to, I want, my goal was to actually expedite it as quickly as possible once those interviews were done, and certainly we could convene a special meeting. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. I'm glad that you bring up the whole process piece of this, because quite honestly, I think the sooner we get to one-on-ones of these five or six candidates, the faster we get through the qualification piece. I know that in the future part of our conversation, that we're talking about when community committees get involved, so forth and so on. I think it would behoove all of us to be able to transcend quickly from what we've read and what our expectations are and our, of the pros and cons of what we see on paper, and translate it to actual conversation, and bring this board back together in short order and, and bring it from six people down to three, and that it's the three people that go on to, to meet the committees. I could, I could be flexible between now and whatever to plug people in, whether it's Zoom or face-to-face, but I'm happy to, to get as, and then our finals would be second interviews, which I think are as important as one face-to-face. The second interview is, is key, I think.
Thank you. Mr. Enos?
And I appreciate, and I, and I, and I agree, I appreciate that, the first thing is that I would want to know is obviously, coming from the law enforcement background, and I know the board would, I'm sure would be the same, on the same wavelength, is that obviously, we need to vet him out to make sure that he's going to be able to fit the, what we're, have our expectations as a board for Mr. Neal in regard to exactly, you have to, you'd have to do the same vetting out, that were our expectation to be able to present him forward, that he would even be considered, because without that, you know, he, you know, again, is all we're doing is potentially reading the resume, but we'd expect that, and, and obviously, need to be in a timely manner, so that if he's going to be part of that piece, as I agree, that I think that we need to, by next week, come together, have the committees, do the one-on-ones, make the selection heading into the following week, so that there's a lot, I don't know what your turnaround time would be, but I also have a question. Can you read the top five again, as it relates to, as, as we had ranked them originally?
Yeah. Original ranking, Connor, 10, score 10, Phillips 15, Neal 19, and then Foster and Van Zant tied at 21. And then there's a drop-off to 27, which is both Young and Simon. So a pretty, pretty steep drop-off. They're bunched together, there's five fairly close.
So I guess then the question would be, obviously, the four out of the five, we're all in agreement of, and the fifth one, depending upon your vetting of Dr. Neal, would, would be whether or not we would have five candidates, as it looks as it's presented to me. Because obviously, I'd want to see what his background is to make sure that he is, he is there, and obviously, again, as you're just looking at it, just that, you know, you get somebody's resume, it's, they're going to put all the things on there that are necessarily, but until you do the deep dive, which is what you, you're hired as our, as the company representing us and our citizens, is that we, that, that would be the expectation, is to, to make sure that, that it's just not what's on the paper, but actually that it's backed up through the research that you guys do.
Right.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, because I, I definitely believe in following the process and what has been in place. So if, if, if it's the will of my fellow board members, I, I'm okay if we don't follow through with Mr. Neal, only by listening to what you have said, but if for some reason we don't come up with agreement, then we'll be looking at some others, but I'm okay if we don't include him at this point, not anything negative, but just because of all the background that we have to do, and if we're going to try, but if he's on, it's, that's great too. I'm just putting that out there.
Mrs. Rose?
Thank you. I felt like that there was consensus, could have misperceived that, to look at coming to some conclusions on our candidate at the end of next week versus the original week, which is in contrast to what you just said, Mr. Enos, so I wanted to clarify that. You had said the following week, after we, after the board and the superintendent search committee, that would be, that would be the original calendar. I would like to cut that week out. There's tremendous competition to make the decision next week, and I felt like I was in agreement with what you were saying, Mr. Edwards, but you didn't quite lay that out in a calendar format of first, second.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm agreeing, okay, so a couple of things. I have a thought, I, as I read through this, I just, I, maybe perhaps we do another ranking on the lower, I, I, because I didn't have this, like I said, I, I feel like I would change my numerical orders a little bit more. That being said, I'm going to go to the calendar. I 100% agree, I think when we were initially talking about this, just not knowing everyone's schedule, but my goal was, as soon as the interviews are done and names are out there and shortlisted, the quicker we can come to a final decision is absolutely in the best interest of us and, and the, and just overall the entire process. 14th, 15th, 16th, I'm not opposed to. I think what we need to do is confirm if we're having three, four, or five candidates. I would, I would propose maybe doing a, I don't know, a re, renumbering, we know one and two are solid.
One and two are solid, yes.
If you want to rank the three, four, five, and below, that might make, and then we'll see where that flushes out, if that helps us, and then from there, schedule the 12th, 13th, and then finalize a final decision day. But I, I totally agree, if we can do everything next week, the better.
Yes, if I can interject, and it's public knowledge, Mr. Connor is a finalist-
That's true.
-in Osceola, and they're moving a little bit ahead of you, and I believe that his priority, though, is here. And also, I would agree, re-ranking those three, the two that scored-
Perfect.
The one that scored, the two that scored, I'm sorry, the one that scored 19 and the two that scored 21, if we can give you those names and re-rank them, that may help you get to four and move the process going forward.
So let's do this, let's-
I'm sorry, Mr. Enos, you had your comment, and I'm on deck too.
Mr. Enos and Mrs. Rose, and then go ahead. So Mr. Enos?
Yes, just a clarification, Ms. Rowan. Again, I apologize, misconstrued. I meant by the end of next week, exactly what you said, we should have the candidate be able to come as a board to make this election. I was just intervening, interjecting in regard to making sure that everyone has the same, as being consistent, everybody has the same background check as it relates to coming in front of the board, and that's, that's, but I'm 100% agreement, especially with what's going on. The faster the better. If we can get together, as soon as, you know, as soon as we have those one-on-ones, I, I'd say we can get back together the next day while it's fresh-
Yes.
-and be able to go ahead and make that decision and that vote, to be able to welcome the, the new superintendent.
Love it.
So that would be the 14?
Yep.
That was why I was on deck.
I like it, okay, that works for me. So I will, Dr. Joel or Dr. Ferry, if you guys want to guide us into making sure we do this correctly?
So you got three people we want you to rank, one, two, and three. It's Dr. Neal, Dr. Foster, and Mr. Van Zant. So one, two, and three.
May I?
Yes.
Is this with the intention of, we would land with one of these three or two of these three?
Let's see how the scores go.
Okay.
One or two?
Let me know when you're all ready, I'm ready.
May I?
Of course.
I'm not completely comfortable ranking. I would like to get a video of this person before I'm ranking them. I just feel like I'm moving, you know, I, his resume caught my eye, so yes, I agreed that he was, but that's it, it's paper. So when I look at these three, and, you know, I would essentially like to narrow it down to, you know, two, three candidates versus five, but however, you know, is there any possibility of coming back this week?
Yeah.
A video of him, and we do that ranking at that point? I don't know, I just feel like we're not being very-
I follow you. So if I may, just be, I, I, so if we, how long does it take you to do all the background checks?
Well, we, we can get on the background checks, we-
And reference.
Soon. Background references, it's, you know, well, expedited probably the rest of the week. Videos, we typically give 72, three days to four days for, because they want to do prep work on the videos. So, you know, I mean, and you want-
Can we ask by, by the eighth? Can they have it done by the eighth?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we can, we can definitely shoot by, for the eighth.
Does that, that's Thursday, does, what's everyone's schedule, though?
I have a, I have a conference from the-
Oh, okay.
I have a conference from the 7th, 8th, and 9th, which I'm happy to be available on Zoom.
Okay.
And I will be out of town the 14th, or I'm sorry, the 15th, 16th, which again, I can-
No, no.
I can, I can work a bit around that. I'm still in favor of trying to get some initial conversation with these five or six candidates. From my point of view, I don't want to speak for you, but the sooner I speak to them and ask my questions and get a sense of who they are, the better feedback I can offer my colleagues. So the sooner I get through that process, the better, because one of, one conversation, I'm not sure, is enough. That's just me.
This is, I'm, I'm going to go out on a true limb here, since we've got some more time. Do you want us to try to get ahold of Dr. Neal and see if he would Zoom in?
Yes.
If we gave him, say, an hour to prepare responses to those? I mean, in terms of the research, that's not a fair question to ask somebody with no notice, right? Because he's not, he was not a shortlist candidate, so he's not prepared to do that, but he might be, might give you an opportunity to see who he is, if, if we can get ahold of him. I don't know if we can.
Mr. Edwards, and I have a, I have a comment on that. I just want to keep it balanced and, and similar process is my only concern. Mr. Edwards?
There was a YouTube video of an interview that he did that I saw that I was intrigued by.
I saw it as well.
And so, quite honestly, if it wasn't in the context of that interview, what he said was kind of spot-on from my perspective. So that's why I, I found him intriguing, not just from the paper, that's why I'm saying it's, you know, I, as a recruiter, that's my background. I don't get to tout backgrounds very often here, or my personal background, but that's what I did. And so it's often from paper to a conversation, and then you have a chance to digest it and go back and, and share dialogues back and forth with each other. So that's kind of what I'm hoping, that helps facilitate getting it down to two or three candidates quickly.
Mrs. Rose, did you have a comment?
I'm fine with ranking right now, and that video is out there.
Okay, so we can go forward with another round of ranking? Okay. Is everyone accept, all right. So, so then we're, just to confirm, we're going to be doing another round of ranking for Dr. Neal, Dr. Foster, Dr. Mr. Van Zant, is that correct?
So it's clear Neal has the support, so we need to do some, some vetting to get ready for whatever. Now, I'll go back to, we can have Dr. Wallace, try to reach him by phone if you'd like, and we can begin that background checking ASAP, and we can be ready to go by then. If we find something that is irregular or, you know, not consistent, you know, certainly we're going to, we're going to, that'll raise concerns on our part, but, you know, having seen the YouTube video, looking at his resume, you know, again, he may have applied for another Ferguson Jacobsum job at some point in the future, we'll, we'll do our due diligence on that, but it seems like that's the wishes of the board right now. So you've got Connor, Phillips, Neal, and then in terms of the ranking, then it would be, Foster would be 10 and Van Zant's 11. be, Foster would be 10 and Van Zandt's 11. So if you went with three, it's Connor, Phillips, and Neal, assuming that the background is consistent with what you're looking for. If you go to four, then Foster, and then if you go five, it's Van Zandt.
Mr. Enos.
Yeah, I would make the recommendations of the board is we move forward with the five.
Yep.
And then if there's any abnormalities or anything that, you know, comes up with Mr. Neal, is that you would immediately notify us as it relates to any findings that would be there, so that, in regards to proceeding with it, as, again, as I would not want to leave anybody off the list that we believe, I think we're all in support of top five people. And I wouldn't, that would be my wish, is to, as you said, you did it the last time, I would recommend that we do the same thing with the fact that Dr. Neal, that they would have the investigation, it would be vetted out, and then that would come back to the board at some point this week.
So I agree, I think that, especially with Mr. Connor being a shortlist and another search, and then the pending background search, I think we keep it at five. I agree with trying to conclude next week, and I think we can get it done by the 14th if we make sure, even if we add an additional round of interviews, I think we just, sadly, I'm not trying, we do long days, so if we're going to, we could do a long day for this one. But if we look at the interview for superintendent candidates, how long did you give each one in the public, if you can just remind us from Monday? If we're looking on the 12th, because we already have our search committee, and we can go that through the second.
Yeah, with, I was thinking with, and I'm just throwing this out as a suggestion, with the five, I was thinking perhaps on Monday, we could do the five candidates with the committee, get their input, and you could have your individual meetings on Monday, would be a little intense, but then by the end of the day, Monday, perhaps you can reconvene and say, here are the three that we want an in-depth interview in our final interview on Tuesday. And we can let the candidates all know that that's going to be the plan.
I'm, I mean, I have, I have no objection to that, Mr.
Repeat it, repeat that again.
So the difference would be that we don't do a public, there would not be a public interviewing of the five candidates, it would be one-on-one interviews with board members, and then the interview with the advisory committee, and then the board reconvene at the end of that day to shortlist the five, two, two or three, or what have you.
And then have the in-depth final interview the following day with the board.
And then, should there be, and Mr. Edwards, you mentioned having more than one, one-on-one, is that, go ahead.
Yeah, I would try, if I, I'd be happy to Zoom this week with the, with the five, to get through a first conversation. I feel that if we exclude the public conversations that we have with those board members, they're already thinking they're not getting enough time with us, and so to take that completely away would be a problem, I believe, with the community. So I would love to try and get to the five, with each of our schedules being as flexible as possible, with Zoom calls between now, then, then our one-on-ones were scheduled for Monday, that would be a second, and, weren't they?
No, they're actually on Tuesday.
Okay, so then the public conversation, and then the one-on-ones gives us three face-to-faces, I feel, I personally feel better with that process with the candidates, and then I can make a decision, quite honestly.
I agree on the public, I think that trying to limit, I don't want to shortlist prior to that public discussion. I think, again, that dynamic is helpful for me as a decision-maker, because they're in the board chambers having a discussion, and I think it also affords the community to see the five. I do like the idea of a Zoom, if we could get that scheduled with each of them this week, it's a little bit more flexible, a 30-minute Zoom, if you will, with each board member, all five of them pursuant to their schedule.
Those are individual meetings, those Zooms?
Mm-hmm, one-on-ones. So then, sometime this week, based on our schedules, then, in the interim, you guys would be doing the background research and get the interview questions and what have you. I don't know if we film them the same way, because we're going to have a one-on-one, I'm not sure, I'm open to that. But then Monday, proceed as the same, however, we need to adjust it for five. And then we would have the committee meet with them. We probably need to, you collect all of the committee notes, and then we read them.
So what we, what we have is a, just a data collection sheet on each candidate, we'll have each one of your representatives from your constituents that will indicate after each interview, what are the strengths of the candidate, what are the questions and their concerns you have about the candidate. Then those will be collected, and they'll be delivered to you as part of your deliberations. We tell them, they can't, we ask them not to rank, because that's the responsibility of the board, but we want that feedback.
So my preference is particularly if we go to five, if we can find a way to narrow down to three or so for the final decision, I think it makes it better to cohesively build consensus to get to that final person versus five, because I feel like we, potentially, especially if I look at some of these numbers right now, we may have like round two or three, and with final decision, if we, so I'm just trying to figure out, when would we do a semifinalist decision-making? Would it be Tuesday afternoon? Would it be Monday afternoon, after we read feedback? That's what I'm trying to get a sense of. Are you following me?
Okay, let's, yeah, I'm trying to. So let's, let's try to, let's, let's just see if we can create a visual on this, maybe Kathy can explain it to me later. So we're going to set up one-on-one Zoom links with each of the candidates. So you're going to have five 30-minute Zooms per person, and we're going to try to get those done this week.
Mm-hmm.
Are you going to narrow down after that, or do you want to bring those five in then officially on Monday to begin the comprehensive process? And here's the other part of my question, because it's not clear to me. If, if in fact you get done with the Zoom, I mean, quite frankly, I would, it would be great, let's rerank them after you do your Zoom call, right? But I don't know how to facilitate that in, in short enough order for them to make travel plans or do whatever on their Monday, follow what I'm saying?
Okay.
I almost wonder, maybe we have a special meeting Friday to rerank, and then that way they can make travel arrangements for Monday and Tuesday of next week.
So everyone should be noted that there are, well, I guess, we would be notifying them as the, of the travel arrangements today, no matter what, right? So, you're, oh, I see what you're saying, so the three.
Four are from Florida, so that's, there's, there's not a lot of travel involved, one and obviously from Colorado.
And if we had, yes, we could call a special board meeting if it's, and I know, we could Zoom in if you're available.
I'm good for you on Friday.
And I'm, I have a, I can't, Friday, I am not available after 12, after 1 o'clock. So.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Also, the, not that it's, but the district is, we have to make sure we have.
Yeah, we don't have people here on Friday.
Facilities, because they're off, and the summer school's scheduled.
That's right. So we try to be, a goal would be Thursday, if we call, convened a special meeting in the evening, what's the schedule for, no, during the day, not at all. Okay.
Is coming Thursday, eight?
Yeah, but that doesn't work, that doesn't work.
She's going to get in time.
Well, then, maybe all five come on the 12th. I mean, I don't see any other, I don't see any other, I don't know that we have any other opportunity to reconvene before that, I mean, the 7th? If, but that's going to be tough to get five Zoom meetings in schedule with five people. It's 25, right, so I, I'm not opposed to all five coming, I think it's easily, easier logistics, we give them enough time. But then from that Fri, from that Monday to the Wednesday being the 14th, there's got to be a time, well, I would recommend that there be a time where we go from the five to a, to a shortlist.
Even, I could do Friday on a Zoom.
I could do Friday morning on a Zoom, was it out?
Oh, okay, um, I can do Friday morning.
We would want a physical quorum of three of you here live, but if, as long as three of you are available live, Zoom is an option.
So Friday, the 9th, is what we're talking about, and yeah, I'm available in the morning on Friday, I'm sorry, I thought it was off the table. Yes, 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 okay, then yes, yeah. So if we could do Friday morning, let's say 9:30, special meeting convened, to shortlist, to move to a semifinalist list, it will be all like a 30-minute meeting tops, probably, if you can Zoom in.
That's what I was going to ask, is it okay if we can Zoom in?
That's fine. If you can Zoom in, because then it's just us reapplying what we learned of the five, and then we will shortlist to that point, you'll help us tally it, and then I would probably put all five on notice that they're, I mean, from a travel plan standpoint, maybe they buy it now and then they get a refundable ticket, I don't know, I'm sure they can figure that out. But I think that would work the best, then we are narrowing down to the 12th on Monday as planned, could be three, could be four, I don't know, it depends on the conversation on Friday.
One clarification, for instance, a candidate coming from Colorado, it's normal protocol for the district to reimburse the travel expenses, so I just want to make sure that's okay when we tell him that.
Yes, yes.
So just an update on that, we're on it, on Neal, he's agreed to do a video, and he's authorized us to do a background check. If we take a lunch break, I mean, I've just got Dr. Wallace asking him, can he produce it in the next hour or so? I mean, I would want you to give him grace.
Under pressure.
Well, I would want you to give him grace for not having been able to prep like others, but it'll give you a sense for who he is.
Mrs. Rose, did you have a?
I do, I think.
Mike, 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 Mike.
Thank you, I, looking for clarification, I think we're narrowing it down to we would have one-on-one Zoom link with each candidate, all five of us for 30 minutes, and that would be this week. And are those public, those Zoom interviews, that's my question, afterwards, or are they, how does that work? As far as records, public records?
Can we defer?
Why don't you defer to the attorney?
It just depends how much transparency you want, I think you can do them privately or publicly, one-on-one. If you, obviously, if you're doing them more than one-on-one meeting, like multiple board members, you would need to do that in a different way, but that would be up to you all as a group to decide how you want to do it, how transparent you want to be.
Okay, that's the one decision to make. And then on Friday, the 9th, at 9:30 in the morning, we would be looking to shortlist as a result. And then on the 12th, I'm just trying to get clarification of where we've actually landed, and then on Monday, the 12th, the community search committee will be interviewing publicly the shortlist of candidates, and does that rotate through where the board is also interviewing on the 13th? So each of the shortlist of candidates would be interviewed by us as a board and by the community representatives. And then on Tuesday, we would have, Tuesday, the 13th, we would have an additional one-on-one with the shortlist of candidates, and then we would make our final decision on the 14th. Is that where we're standing right now?
That is how I have it understood.
So community meeting, community meeting on the 12th, board as a group on the 12th, and then additional one-on-ones on the 13th?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Doable. And Dr. Neal is going to have it done within the hour, so.
Perfect.
Just got confirmation of that.
So the only thing I see here, that we have clarification now on a calendar timeline, and a clarification on when we would shortlist, is those two one-on-ones that we're having, one this week via Zoom, and one, one-on-one with each board member with the shortlist on the 13th, as to whether or not that is public or private, correct? That's the only decision left, as I see it, just, and one more question, is anyone contacting the search committee, public search committee, those representatives, to keep them in the loop, considering that's Monday, of where they're meeting, at what times? You've made those contacts, okay?
So let me, if I may, so, hold on, Kathy, because you don't have a mic on. So the committee is not finally adopted until tomorrow, and then once we have this all ironed out, but I believe, I know myself, I noted the 12th for availability for the people I've appointed, I'm assuming that was done, at least hopefully that that was done and communicated, and then after tomorrow, or maybe after today, pending the approval, that Kathy, I think would be the most appropriate person to just send out the logistics and details, and make sure that Patrick's included in that, so that they have sunshine, they're made aware of sunshine. As soon as that vote goes through tomorrow, they are subject to sunshine as it pertains to this topic. So making sure that they're alerted accordingly, because that's important.
Do you want me to notify them?
I would.
The sunshine obligations?
Yes.
What does that look, does that look, an email, is that a phone conversation? What is your expectation of that?
Well, what do you traditionally do when we have any kind of board sanctioned meeting? I would send out an email, blanket email, that sends to each contact's information that has, not a, not a mass email, I would do individually, I mean, how do we normally communicate these?
No, understood, I just, I want to make sure I'm meeting y'all's expectations.
I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, an email, I think an email is sufficient, I just want to make sure I'm doing it the way you guys want me to do it.
I just, yeah, that's, that's fine with me, I just want to make sure that they are notified that as soon as the board has approved them, they are subject to sunshine as it pertains to the superintendent's search advisory committee, and then following up with that, or maybe in concurrence, even Kathy can work that out, but making sure then you share the logistics and time and meeting place, and then a point of contact. So there's clear communication. So now going back to the schedule, Mrs. Marinelli?
No, I'm, I'm.
Oh, you're looking at me, okay, I didn't.
I was just waiting to make sure Kathy has all the dates straight, so.
Well, I think that's what we have to finalize right now. So I, I just, I'm going to comment on the one-on-ones, I, it's not for lack of transparency, it's more or less the question, and I, I've never, I had seen them as their one-on-one meetings with yourself and the proposed superintendent. I, I'm, I guess I'm open to whatever else, but I think that the goal is to really have a conversation with them and share your concerns and vice versa, or get a better feel for what the, what that working relationship would look like, or what have you. But I'm open to feedback, so, I see people, Mr. Enos.
And Madam Chair, I just, you know, I would rather, I mean, just to be, again, as I think that the background, even though we'll see the video today, I still think that the background, it needs to be in regards to the candidate for consistency, it needs to be vetted out. But I also think that as, as to that is, you know, again, is to be able to give as much input as possible to the public, is, again, as I would, I understand about the purpose of the Zoom, and I agree, but I also was looking at is for the 13th, is to be where we would actually have those conversations, since we have to work with them, and so I'm not opposed, again, as long as everything turns out with Mr. Neal, Dr. Neal, to do the five and bring them in and have them with the public, and then be able to just have some, you know, even if we have to do meetings on Tuesday, then do some more Wednesday morning, and then come back and convene later. I'm just, I'm just trying to say, whatever we can do in order to make it the best as possible, still with the caveat that we still have to have the background done on Dr. Neal as it relates to moving forward in the process. But I'm open to whatever the board is, which includes the Zooms, as also to bring in the five, as regard to the travel, based on the vetting out process, which I think still has to happen, so. Either which way, I'm just, whatever that we do, I still would like it to be finished and done, so as Ms. Rose, everybody has said, that we still will have it done on that Wednesday, and make the final selection of next week, with Monday and Tuesday, doing all the initial, or doing all the interviews, and as well as then coming together on that Wednesday to do the final selection. So either which way, that the board decides, I'm good with all of it, I just don't, you know, to have five come in is, I think, again, is, it's.
Doable.
It's doable, as it's based on, the last search is based on, as I think, again, it gives us the most opportunity with the public, too. But I'm good either way of coming back as a semifinalist after the one-on-ones, which I agree, I think that it should be, again, between the board and that candidate, because they're, you know, I think that that's, that's really where it goes to. And then that obviously the public meeting on Monday is where, again, that's where also they have more interviews and questions, which goes out to the public in general. So that's just, you know.
Gotcha.
Kind of speaking in mud.
Mrs. Rose.
I'm, exactly, the mud part I got, I'm, I'm not sure what you're saying, could you be specific, because what we.
that when we shortlist, we're going to explain to the public how, how we ranked and why, so that we as individual board members are as transparent as possible. I would also suggest that in terms of the, our community advisory committee selections, that we follow that same conversation, that we all explain why we picked our three individuals, so that our, the community understands our thought process and our mentality in looking for the feedback that we selected, so that way we are, we as board members are being as transparent as possible.
Very good, okay, so we are on, we're going to, if I'm understanding, we all want to see the video that this, that Mr. Dr. Neal is putting together now, so we will break for lunch and reconvene at 1:00, is that an appropriate time?
Should be good.
So we will re, so we, so just, I'm going to walk through, we're going to adjourn today for lunch, we'll reconvene at 1:00, to then see Ms. Dr. Neal's video, and then conclude the day, we're not going to make a shortlist this afternoon.
We're going to do that Friday, right?
Well, that's what I'm, I'm clarifying, so then we will leave for today, and then we will shortlist on Friday.
The one question I, I don't, I didn't hear consensus on, or is your one-on-one Zoom going to be private or public?
Mrs. Rose.
Yes, my input on that is that it is private, in that all of our one-on-ones as board members with a superintendent through their tenure is private, and it gives us the ability to focus in with that individual.
Agreed. So, and I think it'll be easier to schedule.
Better way to go.
And just further clarification, no standardization to those conversations, those are strict.
30 minutes.
Got it.
That's it, 30 minutes.
All right, well, good.
And so, okay, so we are adjourned until 1:00, and we will reconvene to watch Dr. Neal's video, and then finalize the agenda for the day.
Great.
We stand in recess.
Okay, all right.